It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Foundation under God, into the soul with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. This evening I have a proclamation regarding our sister city Masato. They we will have a contingent contingency from Masato here visiting Winona on May twenty second through the twenty fourth. City of Winona proclamation, whereas to facilitate and maintain world peace, cities, their elected officials and their citizens need to collaborate internationally through international organizations such as Sister Cities International. And whereas in two thousand one, Winona, Minnesota, and at the time Kagota, Japan, signed a partnership agreement. And then again, in two thousand six, the city of Winona signed a new agreement when Kagota, Japan changed their name to Masato, Japan. And whereas we are celebrating over two decades of our sister city relationship and are helping support a future where the world's cities, communities, and its citizens can come together in common ground. And whereas Masato, Japan, and Winona, Minnesota have developed rich experiences together. And whereas these relationships include educational, economic, cultural, municipal, and humanitarian assistance exchange programs that are mutually beneficial to each community. And whereas Masato Day is a call to action for Winonnans to come together to celebrate the importance of our community's continued commitment to supporting a more peaceful and prosperous future through continued exchanges. And whereas Masato Day is an opportune time for the city of Winona to meet with the Masato delegation to show how powerful humanity can be when we unite to promote peace, progress, and prosperity for a better world and reaffirm our commitment to our sister city relationship. Now, therefore, I Mayor Scott Sherman hereby proclaim May twenty third, two thousand twenty three as Masato Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota in recognition of our commitment to Sister Cities International and our sister city Masato, Japan. In witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed this fifteenth day of May, two thousand twenty three. I'll now ask City Manager Chad Ogle for his comments.
Mayor and Council, just a logistical item for tonight's agenda. Items five point six through five point ten relate to the approval of the Juneteenth holiday for our union contracts. We can do all those items, five point six through five point ten, in one motion. Just need to make sure that when we get to that point tonight, we in the motion, we list all the bargaining units in that motion. And to transition some more sombering news, behalf of the city staff, we'd like to send our condolences to the family and friends of two longtime employees that have recently passed away. Patricia Colas was the cataloging librarian for many years. She worked at the Winona Public Library from nineteen eighty four to two thousand and eight. And William Maline, better known as Bill, worked as the city engineer for the city of Winona from nineteen eighty one to nineteen ninety eight. So again, on behalf of the city, we send our condolences to those family and friends of our former longtime city employees. We will also tonight, back to logistics, just move items five point one and five point two to the beginning of the agenda.
I'll now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Young. Hyma.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Iden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
For the remainder of this meeting, residents are only allowed to speak if they have a request before the council, and I recognize you to speak.
Under new business, item five point one is a presentation of the two thousand twenty two city financial reports.
Move the council approve and receive that report.
Second that.
Motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Come on up. We'll have a quick comment.
Report that we have issued our opinion on the financial statement for the city for the year ended in two thousand twenty two. That opinion on the financial statement.
All right, I'll start over. Mayor Sherman and members of the city council, we have completed our audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand twenty two. Our opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified opinion and covers the governmental activities, the business type activities, the component unit, the other non-major funds. We also issued a report on the compliance audit or the uniform guidance audit for the city. There were no material weaknesses or significant efficiencies identified and no non-compliance noted related to the compliance over federal expenditures for two thousand twenty two.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to restate my motion to be that we receive and file the report rather than the word approve. Thank you.
Very good.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. Any other discussion at all? Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is a presentation of the award for financial reporting.
Move that the city receive that award.
I will second that.
Motion from Steve, second from George. Jessica, would you like to say a few words?
So this award is for last year's financial report. We will submit the two thousand twenty two report for the award. It takes there's a period of time where they review it, so it takes some time before they award or approve the award. But I would like to thank all of the finance department for all of their hard work through this process. It is a huge undertaking to go through the audit and and get the the financial statements ready to print, so.
Thank you, Jessica.
And and can you tell us what percentage of cities in Minnesota receive that award?
Yes.
There's a little less than fifteen percent of cities in Minnesota that receive the award for financial for the financial statements.
And how many years have we gotten this now in a row?
I have no idea.
On the agenda item, I don't remember. Have we received it every year you've been here?
Every year since I've been here. Danielle has been here longer than I have, and it's we've received it since she's been here.
Excellent.
So it's more than twenty five years.
Great.
George, you received it every year I've been here, and I'm here twenty five.
All right, there we go.
That means forever and ever.
Good job to all of you, ladies.
Yeah, I think I think we all really appreciate the work that your whole team does, and this is a recognition of it. So congratulations and thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? George?
You know, Brad Budnick, he's part of the finance as well, too, so you can.
Yeah, good job, Brad. Good job, Brad.
Rizzi.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one is the application for an on sale three point two percent malt liquor license for Winona Axe and Arcade.
Move that the council approves the licenses.
Second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Jerome. Any discussion, comments, questions? I believe we have the proprietor here. I think we're all excited to stop in once you get open. Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, so Winona Axe and Arcade is very special. We're not a bar. I'll tell you that right now. We are family friendly. We're going to be one of the largest axe-throwing facilities in the United States, right here in Winona. Meaning that we're going to be bringing in a lot of tourists and people that are going to be coming from all over in order to throw axes and have fun at the arcade. We have twenty one axe-throwing lanes, so twenty one axe-throwing lanes, which we can have parties, we can do group activities, we can do corporate events. We also have an arcade with over forty five classic and retro arcade games, from the Pac-Mans to the Froggers to, you know, anything that you could probably remember from some of your youths, okay? But we really pride ourselves in offering a wide variety of family fun. And just, you know, it's all about camaraderie and bringing people together. I'm a full-time sociology professor and have been committed to bringing people away from their homes and isolation and providing an inclusive environment where people can feel connected to our business. And we really gave Winona Axe and Arcade a Winona theme. We had murals that were done in Winona theme with the Sugarloaf. We have some really cool patriotic murals that were done as well honoring veterans. And we just want to be a part of the community and look forward to opening this at three o'clock.
Great.
Anything we can do to be a part of the community, anything that I can do to help the community, you let me know because I am a dedicated, motivated individual and we'll we'll be here for you. And we look forward to Winona being here for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve?
Maybe a council outing?
I think we have to notice that, but yeah, sure.
I think we can.
And people always say, is it safe? Well, I always say it's safe to throw, just not to catch them.
Right, yes, that's true.
We are all about safety, and we have one of the top one hundred ranked professional axe-throwers. That's going to be our Axe Pro at Winona Axe and Arcade, and you just don't find that at every axe-throwing facility, so. Yep, but thank you so much for being here, and we're excited.
Absolutely. Thank you. Pam, you had a question?
Yeah.
Could you tell us where are you located?
We are in the mall.
You are in the mall.
Yeah, so I think they said the COVID testing center was there at one time.
Yes.
And then before that, it might have been like a children's little activity.
I think it's I think it's a good change.
Well, I think it's good. Well, and we have more plans than just being, you know, the Axe and Arcade. We want to offer more to the community beyond that, so just look, look at the future, and it's going to be bright, and we're it's going to be exciting, so.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I feel welcome there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions at all from council? No? Okay. Thanks again.
Thanks.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item three point two is a request for a temporary liquor license for the Polish Cultural Institute.
Move the council approve the license.
I'll second that.
Motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
They will be here in June.
Yes, they will. Anyone else? Hearing no one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is the East Wabashaw Street closure request for a dual special event.
Move the council approve the request.
I'll second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is the University of Minnesota Winona County Extension four H License Agreement.
Would the council approve the agreement or authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same?
Motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Laura or Ally, would you mind just saying a few words about this? This is a collaboration, this agreement?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the past, Winona County four H and the East Recreation Center have done drop-in style programs for four to six weeks, so topics are about the same in nature, but participants don't have to attend all of the weeks. Healthy foods, where foods come from and how to make healthy snacks, along with physical fitness, were some of the types of drop-in programming we have done. We have so many opportunities to increase this programming from bugs and animals, engineering and arts. The record is a great location to increase this programming, with it being summer and schedules being a bit unpredictable and all over the place for everyone. We'll keep with the drop-in model, but with this agreement, we're looking to change and add more types of programming over the next couple of years.
Awesome. Any questions of Ally at all? Very good. Thanks, Ally. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point three is the amendment to conduit debt for the student housing facilities revenue note series two thousand and two.
Move the council adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the along whatever.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. I had to Google Alange just to figure out what this to understand it a little bit better. Any questions at all for staff? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point four is the two thousand and twenty three sidewalk replacement project city manager manager's recommendation.
Move the council adopt the resolution.
Second that.
Motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Any discussion, questions? Jeff?
Yeah, I was just wondering. I looked, you know, I looked through this, and some of the amounts, you know, that the homeowners are going to be liable for are fairly minor, but some of them are significant, upwards of three thousand dollars, I assume, for maybe perhaps a corner lot. And so I'm just wondering what what accommodations are there for a homeowner that may have difficulty paying that? How does that process work?
Aaron, also, there are no accommodations as far as the city is concerned. We will assess this over ten years, seven percent. So I mean, it's not a lot per year, but it it's allowed to be assessed. But there's no grant or anything like that opportunities with this.
Okay, so the cost is so so for the homeowner, the cost is automatically spread out over the ten years with a seven percent?
If they do choose to assess it, they they can pay it off all at once.
Okay, so it's a homeowner destroys, but there is an opportunity that they can, if it's a higher amount, they don't have the the funds to pay it upfront. They can do so over a ten-year period.
Yep, and then be assessed on their property taxes.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Brian, they they can have it done themselves.
They've already had that opportunity.
Okay.
They get until October thirty first of last year.
And and I'm sorry, go ahead. Yep.
And this is the group that chose not to.
Understood, yep. And Jeff, quite honestly, it's pretty darn cheap comparatively to having a concrete.
By a contractor, I mean, prices have definitely gone up.
Yeah.
This is probably fifty percent higher than it was five years ago.
Yeah, but it's still it's pretty reasonable. Last year I got a quote, it was, I think, three sixtieth pad, you know, for like a four by four pad is kind of.
Economy of scale gives us the advantages for fitting it together like that.
Right. Go ahead, Jeff.
And then is this is, can you help me out? Is this kind of a part of a citywide program that we're going block by block?
We divided into eleven eleven areas of the city, so we keep moving east every year.
Okay.
This, I think it's Kieramona area.
Okay.
Chestnut to Kieramona, I think, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Pretty soon, will we be in La Crescent, do you think?
Let them shift way back to the west and start over.
Brian, don't you live in La Crescent?
No, no.
Oh, you don't? Okay, all right. George, you had a question?
Yeah, I know we started down east years ago, and you know, it's finding its way back down there. But now, does this include everything from the contractor, the setup, the cement, the finishing and all that, or do they have to get other people to do other things?
I don't know if it's all bit under the general contractor. They take care of all of it.
The finishing and all.
Finishing especially.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brian? No? Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is the two thousand twenty three sidewalk replacement project feasibility report and resolution ordering hearing.
Move the council adopt the resolution.
Second that.
Motion from Steve, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point six is the law enforcement labor services local number two sixty one memorandum of agreement.
I would so motion to include item five, six through five, ten being Law Enforcement Labor Services Local two sixty one memorandum of agreement. Item five point seven, Law Enforcement Labor Services Local seventy five memorandum of agreement. Item five eight, Teamsters Local one twenty memorandum of agreement. Five nine, City of Winona Professional Employees Memorandum of Agreement. And five ten, Minnesota Council Number sixty five, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local seventeen eighty eight memorandum of agreements, which is adding a Juneteenth holiday to their contracts.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from George, a second from Aaron. All those, any discussion? George Goldstar, good job.
Yeah, thank you. That's good.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
Item five point eleven is the plat review Winona Mall third subdivision.
Move the council adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion from Steve, a second from George. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could get any information as to my understanding is we're we're I look through things and I understand we're splitting it into two pieces. Could we get some some reasoning as to why this is occurring?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Carlos Espinoza, Senior Planner here. So this subdivision is the third iteration of subdividing the original Winona Mall property. And the intent with this would be to sell the portion of the property, either Lot One or Lot Two. Commonly, that's why we receive final plats is to make a property saleable so that another entity could purchase the property. In this instance, the property owner is intending to add an education use to the existing mall building. And as a result, that's the primary driver for the lot split.
Okay, and then this may be somewhat beyond our purview, but I know from the public meeting of Hiawatha Valley Ed District, their last board meeting, which was a public meeting, there was a plan raised about moving their level four EBD facility from Kellogg, otherwise known as their sale program, and moving their level four autism program called Spectrum from Hoka, as well as their administrative offices to that location. And so I know this isn't the time or place, but it's being that we just adopted, we just heard from, you know, folks that have invested in axe-throwing in the arcade, and there's a variety of uses there. I'm I guess I wonder out loud on the compatibility of two level four special ed locations there in that spot in regards to facilities that those would require, gyms, play areas, outside areas, all those kinds of things. So I realize that's not what we're here to talk about tonight, but it it is something that I think we need to pay attention to in regards to the compatibility of that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I kind of one question I had, I believe to do this, they have to have a common firewall between the two properties. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that in place already?
That is not in place right now, but it would be a requirement. And as part of your resolution, we put a date of June first, two thousand twenty four for that to be installed.
Okay, and then I correct me if I'm wrong, but I I believe in the agenda item itself, it said something, there will be no construction. And yet, once you get into it, it says it's construction before June of two thousand twenty four?
Yes, just to clarify, I apologize, but what I meant by no construction is any exterior construction or new buildings on the property.
Expansion or okay, very good. Thank you.
But there but there obviously could be and probably would need to be significant changes within the outer wall structure.
Definitely, and part of that is the staff recommended firewall condition as part of your resolution.
Okay.
So just for this portion of it, firewall is the only requirement? And then if there were expansion or recreation area or anything, then that would come back through planning and.
So we had, yes, so if we had an addition, a significant addition to the mall property that would come back through a site plan process, which would be disseminated not only to planning commission, but also council members as well as property owners within one hundred and fifty feet. So we would review it at that time, but just location within the existing mall property. For instance, Winona Axe and Arcade, coming into that property, they just have to stop by the building department and get any applicable building codes. So if there are no exterior additions onto the mall, it would just be a matter of securing a building permit for the work that they would do to put the new tenant into the existing mall property.
Cool. Any other questions, Jeff?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? George?
Yeah, I'd just like to give John Alexander credit. He took that building over, and it was, you know, really, really struggling. But now with the business coming in and the schools that Jeff is talking about there and and things, it's it's coming back to life. And all the businesses out there, to thank them for their time being out there, and they're making it a very viable place again. So thanks to him and his crew, wherever he's all with, so.
Thanks, George. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Thank you, Carlos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Council concerns?
Councilmember Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, the Japanese are coming to town. It's going to be a very eventful week next week. And City Manager, I join in with you on the condolences to the two families, Pat Colas and Bill Maline, two very, very good, dedicated employees, and the water is going down, and it's time to enjoy spring. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Councilmember Idem.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Councilmember Young?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Rapinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address the phone calls and emails and texts I've received about the Winona Municipal Harbor Dix Marine filling in. It's a sandbar. Those of you that have boats that will be going in, I know you won't be able to get them out. And those of you that want to bring your boat into the harbor won't be able to bring them in. I will work with the city, and I will bring that to their attention. Thank you for your phone calls and your emails, and I will continue to update you as progress is made. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Aaron. Councilmember Hama?
Just one. I've had several emails in regards to the the committee of mental health professionals that was taking a look at the funding related to and was going to come back to us this spring with kind of their suggestions. And I'm just kind of wondering if there's an update as to when that's going to occur.
Mayor and Council, I'll just answer that tonight. Normally, we come back to you, but that group is members of Winona Health, Hiawatha Valley Mental Health, Winona County. We have law enforcement agencies. Winona Health calls those meetings. They're collecting the data that we want to present back to the elected bodies. We are planning a joint meeting between City Council and Winona County Board to bring that mental health information back. We were scheduled to meet in April. We got snowed out. We did meet again in the beginning of May, and we are in the process of trying to coordinate schedules based on both the county and city council schedules. And it's looking like midsummer. Right now, we're looking at July before we come back with that information.
Thank you.
Anything else? No. Councilmember Christensen. I was blanking, sorry. Mr. Jerome?
Ah, it's nice to be remembered. Just like to welcome the the Great River Shakespeare Company to town. They've arrived and they're starting preparations for their twentieth season. And this summer, I believe we're going to be able to see As You Like It, Winter's Tale, and a play I've never heard of before, Embrolio, but it sounds interesting. So glad to have them back and looking forward to season.
Very good. Thank you, Christensen.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items. The first one is the approval of minutes for May first. Second is the order. Second is the ordinance to rezone the parcel located at Zero Garvin Heights Road. Third is the ordinance to rezone the parcel located at Two Ten Ben Street. And the fourth item is an ordinance to establish permit parking in municipal parking lot number fourteen.
Would the council approve the consent agenda?
Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor being seven P M., I move we adjourn.
Motion from George, second from Pam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job. Good job.